Keep it short. Thank you, gentlemen, your interesting visit to the.
Oh, really, it's not bad. Point, actually. Yep. In my mayor's announcements. Love to do this. Did you hear everybody? Six o'clock. Me. It's better to. There's no apologies on that. I'm just, oh, sorry, it's done, that's good. Um. So there's announcements. Yes, go, get the guests.
This is. Is this the translation by the bottom thing?
First few lines were a page in that one.
Yeah. It's transcripts, so if you're watching, you know. Yes, I know, but it's not relating to what we're saying.
Yes, can I see, I just. Yes. Now it is, but something, it's, it's started up a little bit, okay. But it doesn't get recorded, it just appears and lasts. It's not wet, but it's a good function. She can say not wet, but it's a tad of a. Fascinated by that. Let's carry on with thinking. Thanks, Dan, looking. Statements from the mayor, mayor's announcements. And two events have been attended, sir. Both in town hall, both were absolutely fantastic, both were excellent. The first one was the Escolar Guernat, just since. They made a film, which was produced in Chatham Marsh. So the same film, which has been speaking the two different languages each time. About the camera obscura, so they'd researched the project, filmed it themselves with the, with the help of an able adult. Made costumes and everything.
Great.
It was brilliant, it was really impressive.
Yeah.
And there was a great animation on the first world, the A O M B in conjunction. Well done to everybody involved there. That was year six in Escolar Guernat. And then the Young'uns last Thursday and Friday, I had to go twice, so good. They put on a great show of Adam's family. Uh, it was absolutely spiffing, it was top quality. There was some performances there, we hit the West End, it really was truly a credit to everybody at the operatic and Young'uns there. Cast and crew. So those are the only two announcements I've heard. Statements from county councillors, as Karen's not here, don't have much to say. Um, but Four Great and I, we had a walkabout, four, three or four walkabout sessions last week, probably before. And I went to one, they were very informative and fairly well attended, the one that we were on, wasn't it? Yeah. And apparently the others were well attended too, so. That was quite good. Uh, and the others, it's just a note, if anybody wants to leave to the. The L D P.
Hmm.
Um, they do, it's, they've changed the address of it to that link that's on the, on the agenda. Because it's, um.
It's on the second, we changed that.
Yeah. Yeah, instead of being a. A sure replacement, yes, I'll have a delivery agreement.
It's a beginning to firm up some designs for the Four Great Hall, right?
Um, after that, they're going to go back now and show us that some ideas and conceptual ideas. But they're going to go back and have a look at it, take the feedback they receive from that and then come up with something.
Okay.
And then they assure us everybody's going to be consulted on it.
Oh, they will be, it'll be a grant.
They really said it, they assure us. I'll believe that, I'm just saying, one day. But we can only go for what they say. That's a statement from county councillors. Apologies for that, so we've had any apologies for that.
Yes, we've got councillor Farron, he's gone. Which clashes with tonight, so on Seattle, two pressed. Councillor Morris may come virtually, but he's apologised anyway. Councillor Marsh, he's unwound, councillor West, he's alone. He's after taking on that basis. Questions second, yeah, so that's available.
Yeah. These are today, then. Any declaration of existence of the taking notes? Tonight's proceedings.
I wasn't sure if, on the planning permission. It's the house in front of me that's sort of attached to my house.
Around eighteen Good Street.
Yeah. Um. So I don't know if that comes as a declaration.
I declare it not, you know, a personal interest, not a prejudice, which means you can still just stay and debate.
Okay.
With the mark, you know, juice.
Nothing else? Minutes of the last meeting.
Will be read, proposal, if you record.
Cool. Do you have a second or is that? Yeah, cool. Right through the slot, yeah. Financial reports.
Shall we add minutes? Just to receive the minutes of the.
Oh, sorry. I always say yes. Um. Can I sit in the office room?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
So for a second, um, would it be proven?
Just a slow.
Sorry. Just slowly, yeah. I was just going to say, would it be proven, she's, she made it.
I mean, it's absolutely all with the attachments. It returns, you can't.
I'm relaxed, it won't be.
Right. Well, I'll.
Doesn't have to be active.
I'll have to send you a, a new login.
I'll, 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 yes.
Sure, let's have things. I'm still able to log in.
Pardon?
I can still log in on my original. Account.
Yeah, I had trouble, just with this app before that. They had to reset the password and everything, I just, I couldn't reset the password.
No, I'll do that, I'll reset, I'll reset your passwords and I'd send you, send your passwords, you go back into office and then it'll ask you.
Jesus. Hey, so, cool. On the human resources.
Yep.
I, I'll see the arrow on the website anyway.
One, two.
Yes, yeah. If you can't find it, everything is on us together.
Financial reports.
Yes, Chad, um, I think there's like additions to, uh. I think some new ones are coming in. Yeah, there was one that I reserve a bit. Do you listen? To the standing order, that's the C S T or T C C grant system.
Yeah.
I thought it was good.
Explain that.
Good.
That's plus. Thanks.
On the bottom of the agenda, we just called him for that.
Yeah, there's some additions, I think. Um, so the tree, I think it's gone on, they have tree surgery. Uh, three hundred and then. We had a complaint from a neighbour of the recreation ground. Make it a bit bigger.
Hmm.
Uh, yeah, so the tree surgery, so I contacted John. Asked if I could go, that's a. Health and safety aspects to get a tree surgery and active survey. That's why I emailed John, the asset management, and he agreed, so we went to Calypso Tree Care, that's one of our selectists. They've done a complete set of a new layout plan, very comprehensive, actually, it's trees up on the recreation ground. And, um, that cost us three hundred pounds. So that's the explanation of that. The energy, the gas town hall, I'm in, I'm in now, I'm in argument with. Good energy, because it was really low last month, if you recall.
Yes.
And it seems to be a, a similar period where we've been billed for, whereas billed for one month last month, we're not being billed for that month, that not more. But I'm yet to get a reply, but it's in that figure and if you need it, I'll pay it once they're done.
They're estimating it, or is it on the immediate reading?
It's on the meter reading, but, but it seems all that, they don't seem to take the kind of last month's payment, so I need to get that. And, and what, it mainly asked me to actually, because of Christmas, of course, we didn't get them.
Hmm.
I have to manually, their still, their online system doesn't work, so it means emailing them, so, as you know, John.
He's actually a state.
And then I'm also showing Free Valley Solutions, yeah, I think that, like I said, that's Cherry Pick a Hire. Eventually, that's only to repair a fleet which above the. The corner, I've cleared all the catters, he did a lot of work while he was, that he found other jobs, so. Um, and then Handyman Services, uh, that's, uh. We found somebody that's willing to come and do all the little things, so he's been. He's had to re-affix a toilet and seat, infamous ladies toilet seat, went again. So we brought out two banter seats, so we've got one for every toilet now. Uh, we've got emergency, we're getting to get that down. And then he's continued to put the other toilet seats on and do a lot of sort of leaks of taps which are leaking and repaired, so. That's handy man, and that's a memorial cleaning, as I say, it's not doing bus shelters anymore. The four thousand pound is the donation we agreed to make at the very beginning of the year, in April, to the, to the, um, parks project.
I see.
It's high green, western. So they've lost it.
Yeah, that is the.
So that went through, that's what I want, it's John.
Okay.
Okay, and the storage high has been up by ten pound a year. Eighteen seventy from first to twenty five. So if you have to, oh, and the other one was expensive, for Charlie and myself, which are.
Cheers.
Day for Christmas, yeah. Hundred sixty five kilos, no doubt. Charlie's the, it's more energy mileage to France, unfortunately, a long way away. So everybody's happy with that. Is that the one where the, um, cloud charges are on? Cloud charges, we have to get one and fifty three, fifty a month. What's we getting for that? Because I pay four ninety nine for two terabytes of storage. We get two. Two, um, office professional suites for me and Charlie, all your email and office rooms, that's all packed up in a month's fee. Uh, we're posting a servicing maintenance contract, we're posting of our, our website, a Chisholm website. Um. Certificates and all that kind of stuff, to add, and, um. Teams calls, because we've moved to Teams calls away from BT. So it's quite a lot, really.
So climate services is not a very good description, the society supporting them.
I must say, it's windows and, you know, and, and virtual, most stable websites. It just seems an awful long time. It's, it's, um. It's less than some of, some of these, you know, like lonely I T would provide, you know, the ones supposedly support the sector. He doesn't charge anything more than what he's been charged by Microsoft, nothing, so. You know, his land is full, five pounds, that's fifty five pounds a month, so fifty five pounds a month, that's just emails. And you've got five to skin and. See, this is why, this is why, thank you, we pay ten pound a year for our website and all this unlimited emails.
You're just, you're, you're, what's that for the domain?
The domain, we, we do it ourselves, too.
The end, what we run into is that we need a secure.
So it's all secure, it's all S S L, because if you can only get a doc of commercial service, people. So.
But not, that, that sort of service that you're using wouldn't be able to access the doc.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I still think he's competitive. Okay, that's fair, I was just, you know.
It's a break down.
It's, it's, it's an expense that obviously is growing, you know, each year, really. Unfortunately, there is a high cost left, it was not.
Okay.
Yeah, possibly to go up by twenty percent, it's.
Don't it?
Yeah, so perhaps, I mean, we could look at Zoom, but then, you know, we've already paid for Teams, that's why we choose Teams, but. Anyway, if you're happy with that, through, through the second, those we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. And. I'm sorry. Okay, so, uh. I previously introduced certain stuff to councillor Alan Morris, but as you can see, it does reconcile, he's, he's helped with that statements. I feel that, well, I couldn't read all the figures on it, it was a bit blurry. Oh, sorry. I tried to, I mean, I could see the remax on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's that, we have to say. Uh. Financial statement. We're getting close now, obviously, to the end. There are some, some. Our stamp. Do you see?
Yes, it's. Yeah.
It's because I'm pasting it in as well, I'll check. Yeah, maybe lose something, sorry, in, in translation, as they say, I'll go back to adding it to the P T F.
Yes, you just, yeah, good.
Yeah, I see what you mean, but plus go back to, what I've been doing is pasting it in rather than.
Hmm.
I used to stitch them all in one P T F document, but this one pasted quite well, as you can see. Health and safety, I've spent a lot on that, um. Most of the top line, which I was expecting. Equipment, we've still got projects, thankfully.
Yeah, that's a bit of a buffer, isn't it?
Yeah, ground maintenance is at its limits, really. But that's a manager have to meet, because we've got an issue with trees on the, on the recreation ground. But hope, but as you can see, we will have a little underspent under Christmas eliminations. There's a new contract came in at seven and a half, although they tried to charge us ten and a half, because they said they had to wire up selected Christmas tree, which was actually in the tender. So I've gone back and looked today. So, so that should cover that, repair, as we prepare the maintenance, there's little bits to. Still carry on upstairs, as I said, the two fifty will be going out there for, and then three hundred, so, so we're not far off there. So as you can see, we're, we're getting pretty close to everywhere. The four thousand was gone, as you can see, to really grant donations, close, Chisholm, I've spent all their money. But I think it's a new, new, um. Term of office, so it's difficult for them to work out, yeah. And, and the rest are coming in, cash expenses, obviously, we didn't spend as much because we didn't have election. Civic costs.
What is civic costs?
That would be, um. The mayor decides to go to events, some money to cover and make official dinners and. We used to give an allowance, but it's much easier just to pay. Fiddle around with civic events, um. That's, uh, the, anything we do in terms of, some of that money went towards the. You know. Tube leaves and, and a remembrance and anything else we put on. Mayor's allowance, we don't have, you can see, we stopped doing that one. Member training, because still waiting for your training, so we've not done much there. Members allowances will be paid if you all get that at the end of the best month. So, because of the, at the end of March, we pay back all that. Um. Interestee gases, as I say, we need to balance those off, that's why I'm a bit concerned about this big bill again.
Yeah, that, that's eight hundred, including that five two one eight is good.
No, that, oh, to, you know, to, so that's what, as you said, if you remember, I said last, because there was that, someone was blowing back last year, of course. So we'll have to, probably have to adjust that from our, um, projects money. Uh, and then income, we've had confirmation that twenty club aren't very loud. So. As you can see, higher, higher, you're not going to. I might just, I don't know how much we're going to charge the. Usually about nine hundred for the. Young'uns, next round of a thousand, so we'll be just down, generally, we may just make it. Uh, but again, we've got the buffer of, and I must do fight about three hundred in March, and together, I mean, I think. So we're not too bad, um, we'll also be carrying some forward, largely from the, um, projects budget, which we do that. And train several.
So I'll just go to reserve, carry over. So carry over, we're going to reserve.
Carry, yes, goes to reserve, because if you're, you're going to get them to reserve, yeah, for next year, so that will help. If we don't put standards to. Change it for all of it. It stays technically in our current account, but we would have to say it's been put back in, if you have to, on paper from the audit, so. Yeah, it would probably ultimately down, because it's a statement there.
Yep.
But you have a, obviously, next month will be the critical tenth. And, and it will all be out of the job.
Yeah.
Just, that's, I think, that's.
That's the financial, you can just have that.
Yeah.
And, and it's my understanding then, we cannot cancel the trade, but it's, it's a loss.
No, you can't.
Yeah, so I wonder what have councils and squares or, and not buildings, I'm giving you that.
Well, that's my special mention, why? But, uh, I don't.
Because these are their accounts, personally liable for the loss.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
All right. Tom, go out for the balls.
First is, we've had the report from the, um.
Teddy Town.
Teddy Town, as you say, and yet again.
David Davis at his best.
Uh. You know, they're sort of bouncing back after lockdown, really, you know, getting back to do, have a lot to work. Very thankful for what they did over Christmas, with the Christmas tree, because it was a bit bigger than I had expected, you know. And not following Christmas, they get it down in January time, as well. So as you can see, they've again done an calculation, long three hours, made their report, and that comes in at about, you know. They're just short of seven, just seven, well, just over seven halves, if you add on costs, if there was a paid members or staff, as it were, you know. It's worth nearly ten and a thousand pounds to us. Uh, for when the, you were around the town, or just helping us in the town, town square, plus some actually else we do. Um. But it was really just to thank them, this report, and also to reaffirm that, uh.
We appreciate it.
We appreciate their work and continue to make a nation three to five for these services next year. And those services are three cleans as well, and then assistance with the Christmas festival as well, and all the sort of marshalling they do.
Yeah.
Mm hmm. So happy with that.
Yeah. Do we have any actions to take on, or just notes?
No, just.
Yeah, just a note. We're anxious. So that's the report, I've addressed. That's fun time again. Um. If you recall, it's through the last, last month, on the toolkit. And, um. You know, yeah. If you click few, I think you go to page, you, you know, page ways.
Read, okay.
So with Christmas. Just try and read through. So. Oh, is it on the right of the five?
It's almost up to each.
If they can have any. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They're really annoying as well.
Yeah.
If the drugs are. If you drag the, in the middle, you're around the table, yeah.
Definitely.
If you hold the bar, click and hold the bar, a bit slider. Um. So under first, the vision, purpose, beauty planning, I think really you've got a follow up on. Uh, the amount of work I've been undertaking with the town plan, place plan, car, vehicles plan, for so many names. Um, but. Um, there is the need to communicate that down, having taken that aboard, simulated it into our business plan. It's, yes, feeling that's not taking as best as we could. So we, we also think of the communications plan to support community engagement, to have, so perhaps going back to Zonarode. And face to face, uh, to use to cafes, engagement, perhaps some more online, seven hours, whether hours, a combination of things. It's difficult, really, because I must, I must say, that's the problem with this, I'm just like, we actually address the council meetings, it's like people to come out. It's always better when you have a project or a topic to, that I appreciate, but just communication needs to be a little bit better. And I know the Chisholm team are happy to, sorry, committee, are happy to use the, use the newsletter, to be more of that, or embracing newsletter. Because we have got that contract in place and all that. And there was a bit of policy and procedures, so I think, again, we, I need to look at the website to make sure everything's up on the website, or maybe as, as much as everything we can put up without. It'd be too, too personal and confidential, uh, so, uh, I've, I've had a bit of a review of it. And hopefully, uh, if members conduct, if there, there is a members area, which we've never used, which has passed with protected, so the process of, we may. They will start using to post things that come in as well, so I'll have to check with, um, it's actually, uh, David, not David. David's my son-in-law, that's not right, I mean, Warren, what's his name, um. What's his first name, Warren. Friends here, actually maintains our website, he, he developed it for the spring, so I'll have to check with Warren on, on how we knew that. You said, you're my session to take a little bit of your business site. I, I'm probably, I'm saying, I have to see tomorrow, and about to, about click throughs and all that, I don't have. It's a WordPress, I'm sure those websites have it, yeah. You can Google all the information too, of those websites.
Yeah.
It's been normal, very normal, sometimes probably invisible, you see how many people. Yeah, the membership staff training is, is in line recently, adopted training plan, obviously, so we need to look at a mixture of training, and John's certainly stuck in the council marshal's. It's really down if you can identify, and Jackson Morris and things, that goes quite true, what we needed, but if you can try and fill it, and. Obviously, now, she's trying to work out what you think. And, and then, I think I was running a bit late for this year, we could certainly start next year with, uh, like. Whoever is on the new resources committee, we can do the unit for managing people, it's called. Uh, and we can have a spoke to any patients in Watworth, Wales, and we can have a dis, this phone session, so it would just be an example of a H R session, so. There's obviously chairman, uh, trainees. Take some positions, chair, yeah, so those are obviously ones we will run. And then if you're going to say arrange to get back what you, you think you need to do in terms of training, it's not offered from Watworth, Wales. Balance to skills, or the areas you feel you need more expertise, and you can do that. Uh, there was something I sent out today, and I wanted to, so if you obviously, there's a, uh, handout or a P T F of the cyber awareness training at the Pazzle.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, that's something perhaps we may want to get. Uh, so it's a very complex area, and that might be something, again, which isn't provided, but there's, you may even need to look at. So those, those are the things that came at the last session, or the first two themes, so. Prefer that you're happy with that, it's a general theme there, and then we can carry on, as you said, the next two themes that we look at tonight. Uh, doesn't have to take a lot of time, so we'll do it like I did, I'll run through, and there's not to ask questions. I was like, we're alone, I can answer them, so these are on. Community engagement partnerships, which has had to be identified from our first one, is, uh. We might as well. Uh, does your councillor stand for democratic opposition to community? How do you move all the whole community decision-making process, provision of services, how to show council stay in touch about top topics? And, as you can see, methods and tools used by the council. And so that was the question to consider, these are the examples. Beauty engagement strategy, prepared and produced, renewed unity surveys, product and work with beauty groups, involvement in other aspects of that, so. And all those, as you can see, social media. Um. So, and that's, yeah, so if we go back to what we should consider, I mean. Uh, I, I'm very confident, possibly, I really believe, you know, the actual plan that you all had, kind of clipped off in dozen. Of infographics, of population pools, we're probably already outdated, these things are. Uh, but we've also got access to understanding Welsh places, I think this conference, it's a very good website. And that gives you fascinating information about community. And you can also compare yourselves to other towns of a similar size. So now, population, just sort of four thousand, electorate about thirteen hundred.
Who said this was with the principal authority, pretty much more engagement? Is it not over corporate town?
Well. You have to bear in mind, you've got Barry in this.
Barry.
It's a toolkit for all town.
Yeah.
It's prospered, so I think it's a bit of a pain in the ass. You know, I think we do understand the demographic, we know we've got an aging population, you know, a heavy path for all this and that. Uh, the next one, well, we do everything statute for it. You know, we involve all community processes by providing all the information on the website. We use social media to post that now, you know, meetings attending basically third in and out to our website. I post this on the notice board, so I make sure it goes on the notice board, so we. And I used to do the Chins website, and I do that strictly for Chins meetings as well, so your Facebook pages, so. And others then copy it across from there, so in terms of that people know. What's going to happen and the decision-making processes, then yes, I think, you know, in this. In this legal framework we are, whether we. Get to everybody, that's another question. But, you know. I'm not sure how we will get to everybody without mailing every month.
The only way to get to everybody is do something wrong.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or get somebody to build a supermarket near area.
Yeah, the next one, how does the usually stay in touch when local hot topics that emerge from time to time? Uh, well, again, as you say, usually social media alerters or one of the members will let me know. Um, we still get people ringing, calling in. With, with issues and usually can address them, but. Mostly they are county council matters, that's the other thing, that there might be hot topic to them. But I have to say, well, actually, it's not our daily weekend. What I do now is copy in customer services, and so I'm sure they will be better. What I, so a lot of them are dealt with. Uh, but the bigger hot topics, obviously, I think we're aware of what, what the feeling is from various social media sites. Um, it, we. Members did try surgeries and whatnot. Um, and used to come in at the office and sit and wait. And we have wanted to do coming in again, actually, actually that's. Yes. And that's something you may want to consider.
Generally, it's a waste of time.
Yeah. How does your council plan provide for diversity of the needs within its community? Uh, again, our services are limited, we're not providing, we don't do news wheels or some of the things that others, bigger councils would do. So in terms of. I think we've been more diverse by version, that we are forecasting and presenting things to people that don't have. That are unable to go to chamber, like your questionnaire and that's the right thing, yeah.
It's actually to do with concerts.
Oh, concerts, oh, right, sorry. Right, but it's a positive advantage for you now because.
Yeah.
You know, it is something hard to hear coming in instead of having a loop in here. And watch at home.
Hmm.
With the band. Steps, essentially, to transfer strips at the bottom.
Have they got anybody online today?
Little bit, yeah.
That's been one of the disappointing. First code, drop off.
Uh, the methods, tools used to involve community planning issues. Uh, well, we've done major exercise. We were weak as we commissioned. The town team to do that plan on behalf of the council. So we've come up with quite a lot of the issues in the community. And I think the way forward is how we address those, I've been checking on the business plan. And obviously, a year will have gone since we. Back on since this plan, certain things that we have done and others we haven't got around to doing. So that's something we'd have to, to review and keep abreast of. And how to reflect the voice of community, relevant planning applications. Again, I think we've got members reflect feelings that they get from general public on issues. If there is an issue in terms of planning. We do move forward, I think we consider planning applications quite well. And we do and have already contributed to the plan, but of course, that's on hold, although there's further on report, you can see. Uh, we, we, we did do. Review of the original targets and strategic document, and this is the first round of candidate sites, we may comment on those. And what does council to engage with people at duty in the language of their choice, well, obviously, we have our Welsh language policy. We've now got fully many workheads and agendas, and we will respond to people in English and Welsh. As they think, if they contacted Welsh, then find to Welsh. Uh, I, I will pretty speak Welsh to people if I'm forced to. And try and answer as many questions I can, much better on the phone than people I don't know than face to face. So I think in terms of that, obviously, we've come a long way really to, to say. That everything is bilingual, documents bilingual, notices bilingual. And the posts that say on Facebook are bilingual, so people are aware that they can pick their choice. We haven't yet had any questions in chamber, I'm hoping that. I would be able and perhaps. The mayor, of course, has. Not sure. And we need to address anything that came in and translated from members, so we haven't had to put down that line, but we wouldn't agree with anybody that would say something. For asking a question, I think generally there, apart from. The community engagement, which I think is something, I know councillor Marsh was saying it would be, it's like something to. We've identified that, so I think that's an area where we've got to get back to, as we say, some of the. Face to face, that was last year, pandemic, and to some. And we haven't had an annual meeting for, it used to be March, we used to have an annual meeting, yeah, which we didn't have to do. By something we chose to do, so we can bring that back this year, actually, just reminding myself of that. So we can, we can make a start in March on that with an annual meeting, just to get members in. Talk to and race, just have a question answer session as.
Yeah, you could have a public speaking. Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's useful, and you know, if you just do a long form of question and answers, so.
Yeah.
As many councils will come and answer questions.
We had, we had the general presentations.
Yeah.
Which, which fell off, the attendance went down the bubble, but just. With actual reason, you know, with a question and answer, answering a resume of the year. Okay, it wasn't exactly exciting, and you've got thirty, forty people in the.
If I did, the question section on the website, if you've got a question. Take a question in and it comes through. As I wish I were more efficient to buy a book, but a book is bigger than anything. Uh, to be able to use it more positively, maybe that we need to. Although it's done for nothing, it may be. Worth looking at a news, there was one from Spain, I think in Cardiff, which is, it's quite nifty, I don't know how accurate it was. But it used Google Translate, so when you went from the English to Welsh, you automatically translate the English to Welsh pages. It's getting much better, but, you know, it's, it needs to be. Uh, you have to have. You do. So as you can see, we've got, as you say, section forty seven, we've got that active tonight, so we've got multi, multi teams in place. Oh, yes, can you do youth representatives, that's something perhaps we need to take forward. And obviously, I'm very successful on that one, because he became a councillor.
Yeah.
But, um. Whether we want to move down the road of the youth councils or youth representatives. I might be worth looking at the school on that.
Yeah.
Because they're council, aren't they? Yeah, I think what you do is have like a shadow smaller, like something primary school and central. Some moves on that, and then they would meet, say, quarterly. And the most successful, you give them a little bunches and give them, say, a thousand pounds to actually do something, and then the more productive ones, but. Uh, well, we, but, I mean, we did resolve last time to point you first in the view to Jeff's farm worker that. See when it's council. But it's something we need to bring forward, perhaps to, for the next session.
Yes, because there was a lack of enthusiasm from the, from the youth.
Yeah.
Um, the, the Stella girl, I can't. He was very.
Funky dragon, we'll see.
Yeah, she, she became part of the workshop.
The last council before May. And I was able to be with the.
Two.
Two, yeah.
If they're on and, you know, I'll be, I'll be better.
Yeah, yeah. It's difficult, you know, it's quite a long process, whereas I think, you know. And personally, I have a nice little parallel youth council with representatives from the youth high school and two. It is schools, working students and teachers and some captains dominated, so it's like. Would be useful, I know, I know I can do something, so I really need to look at.
But that kind of mineral will be a danger, because they've got a school council.
Yeah. Just like, you know, where it's chairs, school council, and say you had project, and then you had two, one or two. From the primary schools, absolutely, I think you've got to identify the youth club and perhaps. You know, it's just getting cross, and then, and then we could come here, they could have their own agendas and meet them. So perhaps that's something we need to take forward, and that covers that engagement with the youth. Or just the two reps, really.
Yes, because they were always on the periphery over their dream.
Yeah. It's frustrating to them.
Yes.
No voting, they couldn't really take part, couldn't they? So we got a few things, I had a youth council and whatever, it's a commentary. This next one, no, that's, oh, yes, the other one, how do we work with our partners, well, we've done quite a lot. Where did that go? Uh, again, there's a lot of partnership working on the plan production. Does the council assess who should work with, when we've got a database of everybody? MPs, Ams, County Council. We've got, have a thirty strong community email group, which we use, I revise every so often when emails bounce back. Are you working, should you work over there? Well, I don't think we are, and I don't know how you would. And has the council showed its resource to develop its partnerships as well?
Hmm.
Whenever possible, we use resources of partnerships because it's, it's the work and. You know, some of the launch projects, say the Chainbridge was a partnership with Tantastilia.
Hmm.
And everywhere else, we have always pulled in money from other resources, we've always worked with as many agencies as we can to deliver. And during the form, the formulation, the plan. We had stakeholder meetings, which were very online, which were very successful. So we do try. So school governors, we do have that there. Um. Just remind myself, did we say, when we said about the Glindion charity, that we were happy for the other, the existing to continue if they wished.
That's what we said.
That's okay, because, because that came in today, that George is still happy to continue, so I'll confirm that. And your report, what are we doing on reports? Again, we didn't have to, but we did.
No, we do, yeah.
Community events, well, we do as much as we can in terms of public consultation. Uh, we don't have a Welsh for the public service boards, we get all that information. I think they now have a representative of local town community councils on them. I think it used to be the mayor, the mayor, sorry, it's the chair of, well, it'd be mayor now of Coleran, there was never. The Welsh teacher who used to come in the afternoon, isn't it? Uh, but I'm not sure who's the right. Um. Excellent, I'm very interested in beauties. But we have, as I say, we do use option, have our councils get that information in. And we do have a charter agreement of principal authority, albeit I don't think that it's being implemented. Try and steer that one back into the, into the, into the calm waters, kind of like, yeah, ensuring, ensuring compliance, yeah. I, I think.
Ask Wendy then, incidentally, with the major ones, these, Festival of Remembrance.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, yes. I mean, on the charter, um. It is like another example today, there, there's work on going to Sustram, last, go and speak to the council. Uh, so I had to point out, yes, come to a formal meeting, but still, that would be nice to charter, get a few. Up to individual meetings, so again, I've just had to try and explain, it's very bureaucratic, but that's the world we live in. But, you know, the reason I'm saying come to the meeting is that you will get the opinion of the council. There is a bit of a message, and I guess the people in the county post charter. That don't fully appreciate the differences really between. Getting opinions of councils and getting an opinion of the council, which is different, so this, as you say, another. Councillor Kelly and councillor Edwards have been speaking with relevant chief officers there. And it's something, you know, colleagues around Devonshire are equally concerned, and I've talked to them, just. You know, everything comes through as a press release, and you know, it just says press release, it doesn't actually say consultation. And it's, and not to disrespect the Welsh, it was always first. So if it's a very large document, your first glance is, you know, even though I can speak Welsh, you don't necessarily get the headings every time. And you do occasionally miss things, and so.
In that sort of environment, I'm with you, Welsh language actors.
Yeah, but, you know, it, it, it should have in the title, to me. The title should say. The title should say what it's about, not just that can you add Welsh press release? But that's all they say, so there's some things there. So I think my thoughts.
No, because we have several members of the set outside the. Yes. Applied members, you know, that can only release information from one.
And it, you know, it's, it's, it's just. It's all at the same time, it's a, it's a, it's a shotgun approach, you know, so. It wouldn't change too much, because I don't really, when you're getting out people stopping in real, and pre-stating every, the email. It was two years' days, isn't it? Yeah, about real or something, you just think, well, and then you finally get one about Trangotin's four great highways, and you keep that one, but. Then it needs to be more targeting from, from the county, you know, to, to, it's very lazy, I think, it's lazy. Right.
Yeah.
So I think we've, as I said, I think we can cover most of that, so, so in terms of. Suppository, leading back to this yesterday's day, we'd like to tomorrow. So we've got the engagement in terms of, um. Community engagement, now we're going to dress down, try and let people, the youth, that's the youth council. So some of the action will be that we try and develop a better communication strategy now. Look at developing a better relationship in terms of. Punitizing youth and other transnational reach groups as well, so. Yeah. Quite a few.
It's a difficult subject, but it's discussing climate. A lot of people, as we were saying earlier, don't distinguish between principal authority and local town. Council. Uh, is there any way we can leave the local on the difference that would actually engage us? And if somebody turned up at a meeting, above you giving away, you'd be.
I have, well, I have thought about. Trying to like feed out snippets onto social media. Uh, you know, about plot and what, so you think, you know, your town council type thing, just to explain, because I, they probably don't know, we do the floor, yes, please. They probably don't, of course, something about Facebook, we, we so call. So what's the, what's the county, it's how can you do about this?
Yeah.
And I just. And of course, it gets even more complicated if it's the A five, because that's the Trangotin Agency, it's nine.
It's nine, but yeah, exactly.
So, you know, the lights situation, so and all that, it's Trangotin Network, so.
You do have the problem that people, each council, general, therefore, bottoms a bit of money as well, yeah.
Yeah, it is difficult, and again, as I said, it's difficult, just. Yeah, it, it is difficult. And again, as I said, it's difficult because.
We don't have a lot of news, we only store these, obviously.
It's sexy stories, do we? To try to draw attention, you know, it's difficult to, but, you know. I have, I did speak.
Well, I was the first coming up.
Yeah. And I did make my friend from, I was a sheep. At a plant in Newtown, and I, well, I need to catch up to you about it. Uh, they used to have a generator, yeah, electricity. And even prior to the pandemic, they, they would do recordings, like meet the council sessions. So the chair of the committee would sit and explain what they meant, what they can do in the next few months, and then people could. So that's, and then of course they'd record that, so we, we could look, look at something like that, but again, it'd be, right, this is, this is something we want to get out as information, so. You, you'd identify it in the agenda and.
Or, or you could pick, for an example, you could pick two questions every couple of weeks or whatever, and post them on. A question about potfalls down there, well, that's not the town council, that's Derbyshire. Then something about there's a mess on the town square. And that is the town council, and then every, just two different questions every, yeah, every so often, what we deal with and what we don't do with.
The change list, you know, not entering to, um, uh, Facebook.
Exactly, yeah.
You make a statement, and then somebody counters it, and you start, so, so.
Could we?
Some business processes are the next one, uh, questions, because it, um. And, and frankly, John says this is, of course, isn't it? But I think the positive thing is. It's not scary. No, so we, we are doing things quite well, I think, as well. What purpose of this is to analyze what we're doing, it's not far off the mark on a lot of things, so. So maybe a bit, but at least we've done it, we can say, well, you know, there's very few, um, so. Timing decisions, thinking, and a process documented. Uh, and that will business service plan, the performance budgets, those questions to consider. Also, self-comitting decision-making agents, more process of place, risk management, et cetera. Uh, run the repeat, so these are the things, the acts, various things, so you know, let's go straight down to the next bit, so. So, second one, well, the top bit, I think we knew.
Right.
Definitely goes the same way, are you on it? Processes are a case, your time decision making, and then these processes are documented well.
Yes.
Yeah. I know there's a valid dark, she's telling her head, too fast, yes. There's twelve minutes, not minutes, I can see. Three years old, it's not done. No, I think that's why this question is here, you know. Uh, we are pretty good, you know. I think in fact, in terms of making, we do the processes required, and we do all the statutory notices online and more, so. We do look at the business plan, and we are going to review that by on reading on for us, so we have a. It's quite late, you know, we did it, so we'll, we'll alongside the annual. Report, which is started by now, leading cross reference to the business plan for future years, so that will be done. How does the council use committees? Well, we've always had committees and committees. We've gone down to make them a proper subcommittees and committees, it used to be the whole council before, which they saw they couldn't be a committee if everybody was on it. Uh, risk management, well, we constantly view risk management, telling that, uh, risk managers are the bunches, as well.
Meeting, hasn't it?
Um, what, and over provisions are in place? Uh, well, nearly everything now is on the cloud, these files. The provision would be, even if you dropped out, you could get in onto the machine and you would be able to find nearly everything in, you know, administration. Challenge, right, and then for that, and it's genders, is that, is that your password in my create that box? Could be, could be, eh, could be. There is an error there, but yeah. Yeah, you may need to update it. And I was gonna say.
Changing, that, changing that.
Yeah, could be the same. But, uh. Although if the login to the machine can change, obviously, exactly, you can change your login.
Well, you have to change your login every three months, aren't you, so really?
So.
This does, wow, the beauty of Microsoft.
Oh, yeah, um, but it's. As I said, I'm in the process of producing a, on the USB stick. And there's lots of others, you know, like how bank, getting into the bank system, getting the support, the names, addresses, all that. So we have got that, and ultimately, there's authority for, uh, ACS to access anything, to override. So, yes, we, you know, as it says here, we could be extending orders for natural regulation, risk management, scheme of documentation. So, yes, I don't see anything now, I think we're pretty good on those, um. Then you come in, well, HR stuff, there's no.
Health and safety.
Health and safety, health, safety and welfare, um. Yes, we do, um. The detective fight at the top end is about, uh, need for a, uh. Health risks, was that mental, um, stress policy, which we've now taken, HR has been approved, um. I think we do regularly assess the skills, results, manages fair, safely as needed. Uh, you know, we have a recipe increased from. Sam now, so the city's officer of thirty, as he was like, to twenty-one, and it may be. Shall be to look at, because that, as, as things change and. Most issues with being able to take lead, which I mean shows it's quite a lot of work, you know. Three, three days of a seven day period might not be the most effective, but that's something to look into the future. We, safety budget, we do the relevant checks when required. Et cetera. We have got health and safety budgets, you say, which we've not spent any, obviously, last year. And again, managing risk, apart from just the risk of the main risk assessment to stand, uh, we, we always use. Risk to see. That fits, we have as well, so we've got fire risk assessment, building risk, we use a risk assessment, ten teeny square risk assessment, so we, we're quite good on that side.
It's that bomb, stress risk assessment, I've never seen before.
Yeah.
To risk that, to assess that, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, we, we've done the, we've done that policy, it's the.
That's right, is that where the policy came from, from risk assessment?
Yeah, because we didn't have one, and it said we would do either one, so we had, we had to identify in the first section of this, when we did the initial trial, so that's why we brought it forward. Again, we don't like to play the arena. So. In terms of that one, I think that's the end of that one, isn't it? So we've probably, you know, got anything to commentary on this, the second half, that's it.
We're in line with what we.
Yes, yes, and we're not off the mark.
What, what I think is what bothers me about this one is. Um, is that, um, this is the formal meeting, which a formal decision can be made, which is my local. And the minister that, that follow on from that are, are, are right without that decision. The problem is that because it's, it's a very formal environment. We lose the ability to discuss matters in, in the way that we used to. We always used to have much more fluid discussions, um, um, any topic. And when I was mayor, we tried to hold separate meetings from the council. More of a social thing, with a sandwich and whatever, and over chin way. They would somewhat derail the advice, uh, we had a fractures council at the time. And there were charges of, of prejudgment being levied. Um, and if you discuss the subject then, then the voices would pop up, so you can't do that because you're prejudging initially. Which made the whole thing useless. We need, we need a venue, or, uh, we need a. Vehicle, which we can, as councillors, communicate within ourselves much more freely. Yeah, and this sort of thing.
Yeah, I think. Our business meetings, I mean, I think, you know, you have well teams, and you're free to use that to set up meetings, so. There's no problem, um, if, if councillors wish to go together and discuss things and set up their own team. Uh, and just talk things through, and then, you know, I think the thing then is to bring them forward, either as individual, you know, as. Thoughts from yourself, that's the council. And then what we do then is, if you send an April sheet, if you're presenting as councillor having a view on something, then we discuss it, and then it's all got reports going to that. And I think, you know, it's, it is, this is the time you've got to discuss and debate. Uh, you know, unless I want stuff, we find out the council. I would like to do something, the tree is coming for, he's working on, on something there, and, you know, quite a good, just so committed the other day with. Councillor Susan's ideas, I've been matched for those, so. You know, I think it is a natural, really, just bringing things forward and getting them on the chat.
We need to separate inform before. In other words, discussion from decision, and please be done, or can't, or haven't been able to.
Well, you shouldn't have, I mean, it just, places to cut, it's best we make, ultimately, capital, uh, ability to see. But, you know, as I say, I think there was confusion perhaps by some people that you couldn't talk about things outside the council. What do you got to talk outside the council? Constituents have come up with their views, and then if you.
Assist, which is the situation we had at the time.
No, no.
That we were continually going on about prejudgment.
Yeah, and you can, you, you know, you can hope, you know, say you can meet in coffee bars and whatever, that is how it works, and.
Once in a while, that's, that's.
And, but, you know, I would say, yeah. Yeah, you've got the emails, and you've got, I think, teams, a few of the fresh ideas over there, but just on each team's meeting, who's interested in this, would you like to join me in this meeting? You know, we have the technology, as they say as well, so. I know it's not my best case, it's, it's, you know, if you want to meet, if you want to, before we jump in. Wine bar and chat, I mean, that's what should be part of the, of the process as well. And you bring those ideas forward, as the case, we, we all can pursue that. Yeah, and then you bring them forward, either to need to work together on a report or present a paper, you know, so, yeah. Okay, so.
Really, moving on, planning applications. What green dots on this one, last year? No. Zero three, two oh two two one three eight, Cressandale, sixty Bourbon Street. Um, it's, there's an access door, which they're replacing with, what the planning's replaced with a shower room. Uh, which means removing the access door and making it a dead turtle door, and they're raising, raising the roof by about a thousand millimetre. Um, it's at the back of the house, overlooked by some neighbours, but no neighbours have, as yet complained or objected. I can't see if we can, I don't see any reason why we should object to it either, actually.
Where's, where's six?
It's on, just past the Princess, no, Princess Street, West Street, just past West Street, so as you go in past the Prince. Unless you live, actually lived on that street, yeah. So, um, capital no objection, A one, and B no objection. Do we have a no objection? Excellent. Um, twenty twenty-three, oh six six, Tiarcha, Caravan Park. And now this, again, there's no objection from the N W. Um. I, I, when I looked at it, they've got, they just had planning permission for a block, an immediate, immediate block with a cesspool for chemicals this side. Basically, all they want to do is cesspool from there to there, and do a little bit of changes on the immediate block to the way the roof is. Again.
You have junk issues, don't you?
It's, yeah, and I can't see why we can object to that, but people see that, they're the captors anyway, aren't they? Uh, Flint Farm Trevor, uh, is a two-storey extension. No objection from county, no objection from, uh, A and B. Uh, it's using exactly the same footprint as an existing extension and a store. Uh, and it's not going anywhere near the roof itself, but if you imagine a building like this, you've got a little, essentially, the roof from pitch to here, it's going to go out that way. And over the lot.
And you won't be able to see it from the road?
Nobody can see it, no, it's, it's again, overconfused, it's a lovely looking property, that's done. So I can't see that we can object to that, right then. Eighteen Church Street. This is just the replacement to windows, and as it's a listed building, I, DCC have been deciding whether it's ahead or not, I think, on the standard of the windows.
They've done a brilliant job so far.
It looks excellent, but why is that? That looks good, isn't it?
It's really.
Um. Are they going to replace them with exactly the same style?
No, they're not, they're not, they're, they're going back to the old style.
Yeah, they're horrible.
So it's, it's, it's going to be a great, it's actually.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, my stand right, number three. This is another extension, two-storey extension, it's at the back, the woods are at the back of that, the only people who can see it. Uh, is the immediate neighbors really, and they haven't objected. No objection from A and B, and no objection from the N W. And no objections from any neighbours as yet, so, again, it's a sight out of mind at the back. So that's a good one. Uh, eighteen Regent Street. This is the, the ground floor, inter, again, this is interval works, there's no extra points here, and it's a listed building. Um, so I can't say anything.
Which one is eighteen Regent Street?
It's, uh, just up from the garage.
Okay.
And then Tannable. You know, there's been objections here, but it's a change in the roof layout, uh, it was, it was a little mine failed. There was a really obnoxious metal roof thing going on, totally out of character, so they redone the plans. And lowered it slightly. Uh, but it's still by the inverted plan, A and B have objected, uh, because of the visual impact to the two-storey extension. A neighbour has objected because of the overlooking aspect of it, but kind of no objection to it. So, again, it's a listed building, so I think we should let DCC decide on that. Which one's Tannable, which Gillsall House?
Oh, sure, I definitely.
Of course, yes, and that concludes the planning.
Youth applications. Yes.
Stiff decisions, obviously, to know.
Yes. Noted.
Hmm, so the planning correspondent, this is one I'm trying to replace the local plan, so it's. The stall during Covid, so they had to revise delivery agreements, and that's. Access since December, Welsh comes twelve December. And a copy can be seen on the website, but I haven't sent out this device, if I do, yeah, they just changed the name because it's, it's.
So if you're a pre, well, it's.
Obviously, if you want to see exactly what the timescale is and everything, that's why I'd look, and then there'd be. Meetings will start kicking off again, so you'll be involved in further commentary, revised plan.
How far is the total adoption?
It's, 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 it's red, very close now, it's supposed to run two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and thirty-three, isn't it?
Yeah.
So.
So ninety-nine, ninety-five percent of it is currently taken into the planning, but.
I should imagine it being.
Because it's a progressive thing.
Yeah, I should imagine it would be, you know. Maybe from the, the citation and the mess. Thinking from the, yes, rotation, and it may, it may reissue candidate sites, or revise candidate sites. And correspondent, there is one item, correspondent, no, it's come, last night, really, from Camilla King. And as well, this one, in relation to the, as they're published, just put in English, to English. Yeah, that's, you know, the S P S, the. The first, yeah, I forgot that, so, what was leveling up, the next round, as they were funding. And in essence, looking in the letter support, council, for what they're planning to do. So I thought just, again, break down its revenue money, and it's two phases, really. The initial one is to do feasibility work as to the future of the standard in terms of not only its own operation, but in sort of various scenarios, for example, if Derbyshire would say, we're returning the building to you. Would that mean in terms of their operational management, and how they could take it forward? So there's that feasibility, and then there's also things like physical infrastructure, so upgrading the tent canvas, internal works, which are revenue ongoing, and repairs, and then an element of community engagement and outreach, and how we really have to link more with the community, and to develop a sort of a. Synergy between all the various. And so, across the town, so the, she wants to do basically what D C C should be doing, community involvement, what's going on. With the standard, and how it affects people, just engaging the community. She, she really, she's, she's very good, she considers every person who lives in Trangotlin's a key stakeholder of the establishment. So it's just a, this is, it's all the expression of interests that are various, three or four main structure. If shared prosperity. Shared prosperity, and then they'll come back, see if it's one that needs to be taken forward. But obviously, a letter support from us would be, would be welcome, so if you're happy to work with Camilla and what she wants us to say, and then add, you know, add the policies, and how it reflects some of the aspirations of our business plan, I think, but, yeah.
As a member of the company, they're talking about replanning.
They are, started in March, yes.
So. It's a bit stuck in.
Actually, I have to, 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 offer that letter support, that's my favourite. That's, that's a, that's a very much, yeah, but I might. Yeah, the change is a big change, we've only said it's one of the frames.